Planning laws in this state, as everybody knows, turned on their heads by 160D. And we're still trying to figure it out. Chapter 160D, a lot of things in there lots of people are trying to figure out. Anyway, so I thought it might be a good idea. I talked to Marzie about it. It might be a good idea to sit down and just have some ongoing training to help you folks out. And we got a great example at the last Board of Adjustment meeting with that gentleman that built his cabin on the property that won't perk. There's no well, there's no electricity. And sitting as a Board of Adjustment, one thing I noticed and I'll caution you about is when you have a case like that that comes up, don't go out and look at it, don't gather your own facts. If you do, tell us you did it because you're supposed to be sitting as a judge and he's he is supposed to be presenting his case or his lawyer is presenting his case to you and giving you all the facts and reasons why. You should let him do what he wants to do. But he's a that's a very difficult person to deal with, somebody that doesn't accept authority and he obviously did not. And he's said he's going to appeal it. When you do appeal a Board of Adjustment decision, you take the transcript of the hearing to the Superior Court. Now Superior Court Judge sits as a Court of Appeals Judge and he's going to look at the facts as they're laid out in the transcript. He's not going to look at anything else, just what the Board did. Many, many years ago, when I first started in this line of work, Eugene Russell gave me the honor of going to the cell tower hearing. Company came in, wanted to put a cell tower up in Ruffin. And some members of the planning board, at the end of the presentation, one of them said, I just don't like them, they're ugly, so I'm voting against it. And of course, they voted it down, but when we got to court, Judge McHugh said, Mr. Hall Bright, he said, you know what I'm going to do? I said, yeah, I know what you're going to do. You're going to you're going to send it back because that's something you can't you can't say. So, did you want to start with the bylaws, something really boring?
Your show, sir.
Are you going to let me run the show?
Your show.
Before we get started, I've got a question. And this may not be the right place to ask this, but since you brought up that gentleman's case, I got to thinking about that. And some of the things that he said in his presentation were insulting and, in my mind, contemptible.
Yeah.
Like, he, you know, he made reference to, on a number of occasions, this is a business, how much is it going to cost me for y'all to do this? And it was like, he was making the suggestion that we could be bought. What, do we have any recourse to stop him and eject him when or a person that may do that type of thing? We've never had that happen before, but as I as I started thinking about it, if we are basically judge, you know, a judging panel up here, that's contempt. I mean, any judge in any courtroom would would stop and call that and have that person removed and found in contempt of court.
Look at it this way, when when he's up there saying what he's saying, he's building the record. All of this been taken down. Just be nice. I like Judge Hines, he's a Superior Court Judge. I had a case with him with a sovereign citizen, just raising cane. And he was smiling, and he was very nice, and he listened to everything she had to say, and then he dismissed her case. But that's all he did. And she said, well, I have a few more things I want to say. And he said, please, go ahead. Go ahead and say them. Don't engage with somebody like that. You're never going to convince them. And what you're doing in a quasi judicial setting is you're taking evidence. So let him, let him give you the evidence. And then you vote on it after he's completed his evidence. And he fell short, he denies the appeal. And that way, when a judge gets it, the judge says, well, where's your evidence? All of this is hyperbole and personal attacks and nonsense. That gentleman may have some mental issues too, so that's another reason not to engage him and just sit and listen. And occasionally you'll get somebody that, somebody like that, if they'll go get a lawyer, they may not ever have an appeal, may never get to you. But the they're difficult, they're not easy cases. But I think you handled it real well.
So basically, we just, it's it's better off not to...
It's like...
Well, I wasn't going to challenge him necessarily. Yeah, I mean, he has he has a right to to say what he wants to say. I mean, that's that's part of it, but...
It's his appeal.
Yeah, I mean, you're rolling, yeah, you're rolling into when people make accusations that, I don't know, I I didn't, on come review of it, thinking about it, it was like, man, that wasn't right. And at some point in time, you know, I'm beginning to believe that if we would just, when people are doing that kind of stuff, if we stop and say, that's wrong, it's just wrong.
Has he officially appealed it?
I haven't got notice of his appeal.
We haven't been notified yet. He came in last Tuesday?
He came in Tuesday, Wednesday after the hearing. And I gave him the information about the AB link, the transcript. He wanted his board order is not ready yet, but he's waiting for the minutes. And then you got to vote on the board order and that'll be the actual...
Right.
So, has anything happened to him since then? I mean, is he still there doing his thing?
Probably. We have, we stay code enforcement during the appeal process. So since he's made us aware that he's going to appeal, he has 30 days from last Friday, the Friday before, one of the two, to file with Superior Court. So once that date passes, then we'll resume code enforcement functions. But we're giving him his due process to get his appeal in. It'd be, in our opinion, it'd be pointless to have Bennett Bryson back out there to start up and do more stuff just to have it put on hold again while he appeals. So if he does file his appeal, you know, we haven't started, we haven't wasted time and added to it. If he doesn't, we can just pick back up and it's only a 30-day stay.
I got a feeling that this may, not this particular thing, that I I got a feeling that we're going to see maybe a little more of this, maybe not, not a lot, but I got a feeling it's going to come up again.
I'm hoping y'all don't see any.
Something like that.
Does it be appealing twice on the same issue?
Right.
And I don't think he can do that.
Well, I don't think it's him. I think I think we're going to see more people doing, saying things like that and saying things that are just wrong. And that's that's just my opinion.
Well, that that is, at the beginning of your packet, the types of development decisions, the administrative development decisions that are made by the planning staff. Interestingly enough, we had a case, when I first walked in the door, where a gentleman put his carport on his neighbor's property. And the neighbor had a survey made and said, hey, you put this thing on my land. He has a couple of acres and it was carved out of a giant farm, so the farm is all around him. And it took us several months of writing letters suggesting that it might be better for him to move it rather than a judge to order it moved. So he moved it. But he moved it on the other side of his lot, and again, it's on his neighbor's property. So some, the point is of all that is you just can't fix everything.
Right.
All you can do is take the rules and listen to his claims and then apply the rules to them, either accept his appeal or deny his appeal. That's all you can do. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't engage in discussions with these people. I'd let the Chair handle that. Direct your questions through the Chair.
I just want to refer this into what you said. I think you were here when we heard the Lambert cane stuck on Sandy Cross long time ago.
Yes, yes, that's right.
It's always been this way. And when I sit up there, we were cursed at, had a lady grab along, cane's been one night, cussed me out. We had a guy in here with a gun one night.
Oh, that stuff, that was afraid of that.
And anytime I'm referring to, we had this room packed and three of the people, grown adults, cried at the microphone by the way they'd been treated by the applicant. So I mean, you're right, it's going to come back again. It's just, you have to take it, I guess.
Well, I've been, I'm sort of immune to that because my grandfather was a sailor and he, he said words that I don't think even been identified yet. When he would get cranked up. But it doesn't bother me. People are going to get upset. I mean, this isn't land issue. When you tell somebody they can or can't do something, they get very emotional about it. We had somebody come in down there that I'm aware of in the planning department and they hadn't even gotten a permit. They completely built a house, a complete house with no permit. And they came in, they wanted to get the final on the on the house so Duke Power could turn the power on. And they had a well, and it's a nice home, but there's no way they can put a septic system in because it will not support it. That was an interesting discussion. But those are the type of things that you're faced with and there's some problems you just can't fix. You just have to say, I'm sorry, this is what the rules are. But most of those administration decisions are made by the planning staff. And occasionally, we'll run into one that's unclear, like Lucky Duck gets a zoning permit, but he doesn't have, he doesn't have a license. And that's a Board of Adjustment case, so I'm not going to say anything else about that.
No, please don't.
If it comes up, if it comes up again, he's got his lawyer with him, he'll have to present his own case. But generally, when someone says, my lawyer's wife had a baby and couldn't be here, it means I hadn't paid my lawyer. That's just...
I stand up with Susan.
In my business. Anyway, when you get to the quasi judicial decisions, you know, you can have a variance request. I don't know if you've dealt with any of those lately?
Not lately. We had one, we've had two since I got here. Yeah, we had the storage building last year and the year before that, we had another storage building.
Right. And that, in that case, they usually involve the use of the property, can't use it with the rules as they're written. And as long as he didn't cause the problem by what he did or what the property owner did, then you can consider that. But there again, that's a quasi judicial hearing. There's a little bit of room for discretion, but not much. So, applicant comes up and he gives you the facts why he's met the standards and he's got to have some factual support for it. And the planning staff can give you a good picture of what's going on. They've, they've generally dealt with a guy or gal in numerous meetings. But it just never ceases to amaze me how people box themselves in on land use decisions and then expect you as a Board to unbox them. So, any questions about that? I mean, quasi judicial is procedurally very formal, it's like a, it's like a courtroom and you all are sitting as judges. You weigh the credibility of the applicant presenting the evidence and you make your decision as a judge would make.
One thing that's a little bit unique about our Board is that we sit as a planning Board to decide special use permits. And that's actually the minority of the general practice. Most of the time in most jurisdictions, the Board of Adjustment makes decisions on special uses, variances, appeals, and if they have, you know, historic stuff, that kind of thing. But, so just so, I've been into it myself. Remember that even though you're sitting as the planning Board, a special use permit is still quasi judicial, just like a variance or an appeal versus a legislative decision like a zoning map protection.
And what you mean, I also realize is that y'all always aren't the same Board. That's why it makes it rare. And from where Lynn's coming from is places sometimes have a separate Board of Adjustment from Planning Board, and that Board of Adjustment will still hear special use permits. But if we had a separate Board here, y'all would handle only quasi judicial as the Planning Board, and then the Board of Adjustment would hear the variance and appeals. But since y'all are combined, it doesn't really make a difference sitting wise, but it is kind of unique that we let the Planning Board itself make a quasi judicial decision.
What cases did you add with a variance that you can recall?
The most, the most recent that I can recall were structured, one of which was issued a permit, but he set it up and he set it up in a fashion that didn't meet the standards of the permit, but the Board granted him a variance because he cited hardships with the land that were atypical to other properties and there were several factors.
He had like some massive drainage thing going through the property in the middle, so there was, let off the setbacks on the side. It wasn't common with that area.
Another was a very odd shaped lot that a fellow, remember the fellow who wanted to put the manufactured home on it?
Yeah, sort of a triangle shaped lot.
And he wanted to put the manufactured home on it, and there was no way for him to set it up without getting a variance based on the lot dimensions, let's just put it that way. I think there may have been another factor or two in there, but I think the Board granted that one also.
Well, most of, most of the cases that the Board of Adjustment has heard all involve setbacks.
And that one with the manufactured home, there was no standard size of anything that could be placed on that property without going into setbacks of some measure or not. And so there was no possible way of configuring or rearranging, they couldn't grab extra land.
Well, this county is unique. It's the county of the hills and the valleys. There's very little flat land to put anything on it.
That's true.
It's been my experience, 25 years ago when I was here, that was a problem. And people would buy a piece of land and they'd stick the house wherever they could because sometimes the drop off was like the Grand Canyon. Then there's the folks that build their double decker single wide mobile homes on top of a shingle landfill. I don't think anybody's familiar with that case. That was the Patrick Proud case. Do you remember that one, Keith? Patrick Proud?
I think I do.
He was a roofer. He had taken years and years and years of shingles and filled in his valleys so they were flat. And then he took a single wide mobile home and put it out there with no permits, and then he put a second single wide mobile home on top of it. So he had a two-story, single wide mobile home.
That is...
Moving on up.
And I'm sure Mark remembers it, but he was raising a cane about it because the code enforcement people are all over him, the state was all over him for building it on top of a shingle landfill. And he was something else, that the, you can't put a mobile home on top of another mobile home. It's two-by-two wall construction. And he was, he was like Ernest T. Bass. In fact, he sort of looked like him. Without an order, without an order for him to take it down, Board of Adjustment said, no, sorry, won't work. You've got to take it down, you've got to demolish it. And so he went out with a, he said, I'm just going to burn it down and had five gallons of gasoline and poured it all on the front porch and the sheriff showed up, the fire department showed up, and he lit it, and they put it out, and they took him to jail. But that was one of the more...
Lucky didn't set all those shingles on fire.
Well, they were covered in tons and tons of dirt. Because he had made, I mean, he made a gully flat, he had filled it up, and that's what he put his house on. But that's the kind of person you have, like the gentleman that was here a couple of weeks ago. They're going to do what they want to do and are not going to follow the rules. And then it's up to you folks to decide whether his appeal has merit. The other type of decision you make is the legislative decision. And I've got a little chart, I think I put in your packet, that spells all of these things out, gives you just a thumbnail sketch of what you need to look for. So we're just going to do a legislative decision, and it's in court now. But those are political decisions made by the county commissioners. And that's an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, that's what that does. That particular case, it's going to be heard the week of March 18th. And the issue in that case is one of standing. In order to have standing, you've got to show special damages, not just general damages. Highway corridor is being developed, it's going to be developed, you're going to have more noise, you're going to have more pollution, more trucks, more traffic, more people. That's just the way it is. And when someone rezones their farm to highway, to highway commercial, if you claim your damages, you've got to really have some significant damages. You can't just say there's more traffic, there's more people, there are more, there's more noise in order to make that claim. So we'll find out.
Just to be, just to be clear, Clyde, we do have the authority to deny someone the opportunity to speak if they don't have standing.
Well, usually standing is an issue that comes up when they try to appeal to Superior Court. But in this case, when you're having a quasi judicial appeal, you can ask somebody, what's your relationship to the property? Are you a neighbor? Do you live five miles away? Do you live a mile away? When you're that far away from the gentleman that doesn't have a septic system, really the only people that have standing to complain would be the next door neighbor. The other ones are going to be immediately affected if he puts in his own septic system and it fails. There was one off of, I can't remember the name of the road. When I first came here, a little over a year ago, the septic system had failed and the person had refused, refused to repair it. The neighbor's backyard was, was a swamp and it was nasty. He refused to make the repairs that the health department required. And so that was one of the last cases I had before Judge Allen, and Judge Allen ordered him to do it. But the neighbor is the one that suffered damages to his property because of the sewage going across. It has to be actual damages, can't just be speculative. There's a case in North Carolina law where a man had a poultry farm, it's huge, and the county purchased property from his neighbor to put a school up right next to the chicken farm. And he said, I don't want you to do that, I don't want you to zone that for a school because I can tell you what's going to happen. First hot humid day, I'm going to get all kinds of complaints from the children and the parents and the teachers because there's nothing that smells like, it's a unique fragrance from a poultry farm. I speak from personal...
Master of words, Clyde.
It is, it is a fragrant ammonia smell, you just can't, you can't believe it. Well, in that case, he said, I want you to stop. So he sued, trying to get the, trying to stop the county from zoning the property for a school. And the planning board said, hey, there's nothing wrong with this, put a school there. And he said, well, you're going to come after me, you're going to interfere with the use of my farm. And the court in that case said, that's too speculative, school hasn't been built yet. We'll, we'll wait and see. But that's...
He used to say, I told you, son.
Yeah, well, that's why we have, that's why we have plant, rules for planning. And it just seems to me to be kind of a ridiculous thing to even think about that if you're a school board and you want to put a school next to an existing poultry operation.
What in the heck did they think was going to happen?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, there was a school here on Highway 220, right outside of Madison, and when I was Assistant County Attorney here, I looked at those plans and I said, hold on a second. Where are the school buses going to queue? On 220? The school buses are going to queue on 220? And I said, that's not going to work very well. They have 25 or 30 school buses turning in, and then in the afternoon, turning out? So they thought, thought it through and they bought another piece of property, I think, to go with that, just so they could have enough land to have enough driveway so all the buses could go through. But that's what you have to think about, especially in this community where you've got development coming, just, it's unbelievable. The traffic, I just saw a traffic study, I think you sent it to me. It's going to, it's going to be enormous. Yeah.
The whole thing that Clyde was talking about, that night, school board, it was a joint meeting, it was a joint meeting that night, and here it was packed. There was a lot of opposition to it. The property owners, the group out there had heard, talked to a highway patrolman to come talk in their defense. He came into the room with his, remember that uniform on?
Yeah.
With the briefcase. And our county manager realized that he, he was beaten, put in a difficult situation that could jeopardize his job. He walked up to him and worked, Clyde, and told him, says, you probably need to get back home. Don't get in the middle of this. So he went out the door. I mean, it's the same school.
Mm-hmm. Well, getting back to my question about standing, because I, not really clear on, the school of government says that the people who sign up for a case, say quasi judicial case, and they sign up to be heard, but they're really not having any special damages. School of Government suggests, let them speak, listen to them, but you don't have to assign any weight to their testimony. Well, the difficulty I have with that is that, and it pertains all zero right in on it's gambling. We are going to hear, I think, my personal opinion, in the future, a lot of cases that are going to involve some level of gambling. And the, the push for the General Assembly to legalize casino gambling on non-tribal lands is going to become a big issue, if it hasn't already. It's going to come back.
It already has.
And the reason it's going to, the reason it's going to come back is that there's just too much money at stake. Do you realize that the Danville Casino has already made enough money that they've lowered everybody's personal and property taxes by 50 cents a hundred? That's astronomical. And they're not even opening the, the brick and mortar hotel isn't even finished yet.
Fair or static?
This state is beyond 50% into full-blown gambling. We've got, we've got the lottery tickets, we've got scratch offs, we've got Mega Millions, we've got Power Balls. Now you've got electronic scratch offs, you can do it on your damn phone. So, you know, to say, to say that, well, you know, gambling's not going to be a problem, well, it is. And all of the people, I've done a lot of research on this subject, I've been following gambling for over a decade, since I started writing about it. And the, all the research that's been done on the effect of having casino gambling on non-tribal lands is divided. Half of the research says crime's going to go up if you do that, the other half says, no, well. The only place crime has been shown to go up significantly, excuse me, with casino gambling is on the tribal lands. And, and that's largely due to inefficient government on the tribal lands. A lot of the people still live in poverty, they're not sharing in the revenue. But in this case, the taxes that the state would collect would benefit all citizens of the state.
Well, until you get to Quala Boundary, Quala Boundary, actually, they do share. So you have...
Well, they may be an outlier.
Yeah, they're an outlier. And actually, I worked with them. And actually, I worked with them when I worked for Special Olympics, they actually gave money to Special Olympics. So we, we would talk about, we'd go out there and Harris supported it. So I've got personal, professional experience working with a casino.
Yeah, I don't want to.
And Quala Boundary, what they do, Quala Boundary, they, they divvy it up, but you have to, you have to qualify as an actual member of Quala Boundary. You can't just say, I'm Cherokee. You have to have, you have to have, well, standing basically, to say that you are a member, or one of your ancestors was a member of Quala Boundary before you get those monthly payments. But they do, they, and they, they give money, the casino gives money to Quala Boundary.
I don't want to digress too far off the subject here, just wanted you to understand where I think all the standing issues are going to come in. Because we're going to get people that come up here, they're already putting signs out on the chairs for the commissioners' meetings, no casinos and, so we're, we're going to hear plenty of it. And at the planning board or Board of Adjustment meetings, when we get somebody that comes in and claims, well, I'm speaking for the people of Rockingham County. Oh, really? I mean, do we have to, do we have to allow these people to tie up our time and resources to, when they don't have standing?
I don't know, quasi judicial hearing, I would say, just as a general rule, it's the landowner, the neighbor, next door neighbor, or neighbor across the street. If, if he's got a lot of farmland and he wants to put a high traffic business in right across the street and he wants to rezonate, he wants a special use permit, then the neighbor across the street and maybe 10 neighbors each side down the road that are going to be affected by the increased traffic would have standing in those cases.
Clyde, real quick, state law says in notifying legislative, quasi judicial, we do neighbor directly.
Right.
But legislative decisions, we also go out 1,000 feet from that parcel. Are we conferring standing on to those people?
Well, a legislative decision, the, the whole idea is to hear from everybody.
Well, we also do it with, we do it for the special use too, right? So for the special use, we also do 1,000 feet. Are we conferring standing on that quasi judicial decision?
Well, it's a, that gives you, they can come up and speak about it, but I would ask the question, how far away are you from this property? Well, I'm five miles down the road. Okay. Well, I've got the Woods of Terror 500 feet from my house. My neighbor Eddie McClaren started 35 years ago and who knew it would explode into the giant entertainment that it does? But it's two weeks out of the year now. And I've had neighbors that moved in, a lady across the street passed away, her son sold the 200 acre farm and now there's 400 homes. And people have moved in and they don't like the noise and the traffic, so they came to see me. And said, we don't like the noise and the traffic. I said, well, he's got a special use permit from Guilford County. It's two weeks a year. Sorry, I'm not going to represent you against my neighbor. But if you have standing, a situation like that where the only way to get to your house is Church Street, and when you come home for dinner and you have a 20 minute wait to turn in your driveway, that's, I probably had standing, but I didn't go to the hearing. I didn't speak out against his special use permit 20 years ago. As long as he runs his business and he doesn't, he doesn't expand it. And what he's done now, he's, he's actually rented people's farms, they mow the grass in the field and he lets them park people out there.
Yeah.
So they're making a little money too. But like I say, it's two weeks a year. So all of those factors come into it. If you just have somebody that's the neighborhood crank, that doesn't like anything, they're going to come to every meeting and talk about everything.
So for example, when we heard the, the rezoning case for the 192 acres on 220, a lady comes in and she speaks, she's from, she lives in Madison, that's a good six, seven miles.
Right.
From, from the property itself. We could have told her, you don't have standing.
Right. Well, no, that was legislative.
So that was the legislative.
That was strictly zoning, which is legislative.
Got it, okay.
The decision should be made is the, the people that are anti casino, they, they ran with that ball, those people running for office pushed that narrative that you can stop it and here's how you stop it. You stop it at the planning board and stop it at the commissioners. And gambling is a state issue. The only way to stop that is go down to Raleigh. And that's, and that's what, I think you're going to be faced with it again.
If I may interject, we may as well get used to that serving because no longer than I've been on the board, it's been thrown in my face numerous times and it's not going to go away, you're right. And growth up and down the corridor is not going to go away. It's, it's here. I'm lifelong resident, grew up on a farm in Ellisboro, so I know all about that part of it, but I also know about, you know, we, we are going to be challenged and it, and it ain't going to be in the future, it's here.
Right.
Making decisions. And I think we have to remember that up here, you know, if we, we can't get too attached on our hearts feelings, how we feel about something if we're going to.
We've got to remember.
Start the people in a fair way.
The reason you have this plan and, and the Unified Development Ordinance, because you've got 220, which is going to be Interstate 73. And that's where you want these type of businesses. You want them on a busy highway where there's already noise, there's already pollution, there's already a lot of people. You don't want to put a school for migraine headaches on Interstate 73. It's just, it's just common sense and you've already decided where you're going to put things in your comprehensive plan. So you just need to stick to it.
So as a practical thing, because at the, in the, in the material you provided, there's a statement that says, as a practical matter, many of the presiding officers will allow persons, not a party, to present evidence, but care must be taken not to, to be sure it's not relevant to the case. So, I mean, as, as a board, do we want to take that position?
Well, I think the chair can make the call if a person has something worthwhile they need to say. If it's a, if it's a real estate appraiser and he's licensed and he does that for a living, then yeah, maybe he can give you, share some light on a, on a topic that you're wrestling with. That would be something better than just a layman who says, I don't like it. I don't like my farmland being turned into condos. But that's, that's something you have to weigh to see if it's relevant and if it's substantial and material to the issue that you're dealing with. And it's not an easy task that you have.
And only two points, looking at what Quinn said, I think it was 1998, does that sound right? I was on the board, I think I was chairman the year we did that.
Right.
If it wasn't the first, it was the second comprehensive use plan in the county, 14 may have been that, I don't know. The thing that really was issued with the neighbors was H.I., heavy industrial. So we sort of bargained with them to just take that wording out and do away with heavy industrial in the tax. And it seemed to please most everybody, but not everyone. Because I got cussed out several times over that. But.
So what's our ability to have, you know, we frequently talk about the land use plan and the UDO as we're sitting here. I wonder what, if, if we could have maybe two or three copies of that interspersed in the room when people are here so that when we talk about this thing, they, you know, and you can say, if anybody's interested in looking at it, you, you have them, they're distributed, or we have them available here at the desk, if you'd like to look at it because you will hear your planning board members refer to it. And, and I guarantee you that 99.95% of Rockingham County residents have absolutely no idea what a growth node is and that there is an industrial corridor running up and down 220. And when I talk to people about it, I'll say, well, you do know that there's a land use plan that you can look at, it's on the county website. Nobody's going to do that, but if you, you know, if we've got those, if we've got that thing sitting out here.
The problem with doing that is that these documents, to the best of my recollection, the land use plan is well over 200 pages and the UDO is well over 300.
But I, I mean, not that they, not they can take.
They're not going to sit down, nor can we allow them the time to sit down and flap through it to see what's going on.
Oh, no, no, I'm just talking about if, you know, not while they're trying to, to give their, but just as reference, because like I say, we talk about these things and you can say, well, you know, we've got a couple of copies up here if somebody wants to look at it. And that's, no, we don't say that, staff can say.
Unfortunately, a lot of the folks that's going to come in here, I don't, if you tattooed it to them, it's not going to, they're, they're here to, because they want to see the cows on 220. They're not here to, it may lower our property taxes and we may, could lose a sales tax in North Carolina, they don't care. But, and they want to tell the other person that owns that property what they can do with it, so.
We, we make it well known when these people call in, these resources are available for them to come look at in the office or on where they can find it online. The number of times people say, I went on your website, couldn't find it, and then I'll go, where'd you go? Because they didn't go to community development or planning or anything like that, they went to engineering or they went to util, you know, environmental health, something like that. But we can have copies available, but I agree that if they, if they do thumb through it, we'll be here for two or three hours while they try to find what they're looking for. When we pointed out to them directly, they sometimes are thankful, sometimes they think we're obfuscating what's really going on and showing them one part instead of showing them the whole thing. But we, as staff, we have zero qualms of putting something out here, but we do make it well known to the people who do call in where they can get this information.
Well, even beyond that, the staff report that comes before us.
Just get racing.
Always lists the portion of the general statute that applies, the portion of the land use plan that applies and a portion of the UDO. They exert the language right out of the.
Yeah, I wonder though, if, like, sometimes on the renderings that we see, you'll see the, like, particularly with the 221, you'll see the, you'll see the line on either side. It could just be, as part of the report, you could just do a reminder, just a reminder that this is in the growth node, the 220 growth node, this is in the industrial corridor that runs the, the entire length of 220 through the county. And just, you know, I think sometimes if, if people, well, they're not going, they're going to only hear what they want to hear, you're right, Quinn, but maybe just a couple of more sentences in the report to say, just remember, remember folks, as they're looking at it and you could, you can zoom out and say, here are the growth nodes, just so you know.
I see what you mean.
Yeah, yeah.
If you have a corridor plan, do you have the most protection of anybody in Rockingham County if you live within, inside that corridor plan? Because you know you're protected until that land changes hands. If you're moving in here from another county, I know, I think I would do it, I would do my due diligence to see what's going to be around me. And I know that was one of the arguments with some of the folks, some of the comments that were made, they didn't have an idea that it had that potential. Well, they didn't do that homework.
Yeah.
But we can't be, we can't be doing everybody's due diligence for them.
You've got to do it yourself.
Yeah, that's not what we're here for.
No, but when we're, when they're reading, when they're presenting these cases, the, the people in the audience in particular, well, and the general public, can be reminded that as part of the land use plan, this is what this is. And you may, and you know, you could reference, say, you may hear the planning board members refer to this, just to remind you, this is the land.
Whether Lynn or Myers, who presents a case, I've heard them numerous times say, this is in the land use or, or high development corridor, G3 land classification. Plus it's in the staff report.
I think I hear what you're saying, Julie, that there might be some instances, for some cases, particularly within, because you know, G3, there's the arc.
Yeah.
And then there's what, the mile, you know? It's right, it's a mile across, all the way up.
Right, right.
If it's in the mile, particularly point out, because we've done this before, particularly point out that it's located within the corridor. And that sometimes in other cases, when it's in G3 but not in the corridor, like the Ogren Mill rezoning that y'all considered in November, we point that out too. But I see what you're saying, we could do a better job of pointing out what's in the corridor, particularly if it happens to be a high impact kind of project.
And then that way, if we get challenged, we can say, we can, it was in, it was in the report, did you pay attention to the report, that kind of thing?
Right, it's, it's right here.
Yeah.
You know, that kind of thing, yeah, sure.
How long it's been?
Exactly.
Probably the first one.
It was about nine acres, it was probably, we started watering, so.
Yeah. That's when the first 220 study was done, right? And the corridor plan was laid out, that's, yeah.
Well, I can't tell you how many times I have, when we've done our board discussion, how many times I've said, I grew up here, you know, I grew up in Mayadan, so I've known from the time I could remember that 220 was going to be a corridor, as long as I can remember. And that's, you know, that's 60 some years old now, that's 60 some years ago.
That's a long time ago.
That was a long time ago, that's right.
Paul, I've got this one thing I want to ask Clyde about if it's okay.
Sure.
Speaking about 220, you know, we saw the case that Roy came over with a few weeks ago with Mike Fox on, was that RA or RP?
The one on Carlton Road.
This is currently, they rezoned the RP several years ago for the subdivision.
Years ago.
Yeah, I mean, that's one thing that's really important to me as an individual, especially on that corridor. You know, I don't know where that's going to go, like, I guess they'll come back at some point in time, I don't know. You know, is what, what is it going to do, light industrial, LI?
Highway commercial.
Yes.
The one on Carlton Road is RP to highway commercial, the one on Ogren Mill was RA to LI. Okay, Ogren Mills, yeah, that's when Mr. Fox stood up there and presented the whole case, yes.
I think that's something I sort of have a problem with, you know, we have people living in those neighborhoods, they should be protected under the zoning.
Well, they are under, that's why we consider it as staff not to be reasonable and recommend a denial. However, the land use plan, and this is something we've always got to remember, it's not a tomorrow plan, it's a 20 to 40 year plan. So they may be, you know, I know they have their community there now, but whenever that plan was drafted, whoever drafted that node down there took into account everything that Mr. Fox also pointed out, everything in Guilford is spread that far wide, that's why in Rockingham County it's spread that far wide and then closes back up and goes up 220 is on the off chance in 20 some years, someone's developed to that point that that is ready for it. But I know what you're saying, whether that was taken into account by the people who did the land use plan about those specific neighborhoods, I can't say wasn't here. And there's no notes on, on that. I do know the notes talk about, because of the, the width of industrial sector in the neighboring county, immediately adjacent to that area, our width was to match in case that growth immediately went north, it could be prepared for if it was reasonable and could be accommodated. Currently, it's not reasonable, the land's not, not ready for it. 20 some years from now, it may be. And that, that's why this plan is a 2040 vision plan, it's not what we want to do today and tomorrow. But from what, from that perspective, whether they were considered as a, as a subdivision or not, I don't know. We do that on our end on the current planning stage, not a long range planning. Because a long range plan, you can't bank on a subdivision still being there. A lot of the larger ones you usually can, but the smaller 10, 12 home ones, sometimes those fade away, sometimes they get larger. So I know from just long range planning experience that you look at the possibilities down the road, it may not mean that it's ready for it next five, 10 years. So it has to have a little bit of human common sense when we apply these things. It's not exactly written in, in the most regard down to the detail of each street. That's what we would do with like small area plans in the future kind of thing, if we wanted to go that route. And that would offer greater protection to those little subdivisions while still planning for those larger commercial growth nodes. But the plan's like a two mile above, two mile in the sky plan, not a 500 feet. So the, the most protections are afforded by our current ordinances, which, you know, does the landscape buffer, does the separation requirements with setbacks and things like that, while the land use plan, so I don't want to get those confused, just for anybody who watches this after the fact, those are two separate documents with two separate purposes. The land use plans are prepared for the future and we use it to help guide the ordinances, but the ordinances are for current protections.
I just want to say this to the planning board members, I mean, and I don't know why, it's probably a good, essential off of this, but I do know that being a member of the planning board is a whole lot tougher than being a commissioner. Because I voted one time to rezonate a guy's property in Rachel. Because I voted one time to rezonate a guy's property in Rachel, outside of Rachel. And it was a mistake and I got pressured into doing it. And I felt really bad about it. And I had a hard time dealing with it. And about a month later, I went to the guy and I said, I'm going to tell you, I said, the land owner, I said, I made a wrong decision. And I said, I'm, it was a mistake. He reached out and shook my hand and said, I appreciate you being honest. And me and him had some issues until I came to terms with it. So I, you know, we got a tough job here. And it's, it's a lot of tough decisions coming, so. I mean, it's a whole lot easier being the county commissioner of this, because those decisions, you got all the information you need to make the best decision possible. But this right here is a whole lot different when you're dealing with, they'll pay parties, they're property owners and they pay taxes and the right to do what they need, want to do with their land. I understand.
Real quickly, I, going back to the Carlton Road, and I was trying to bring myself up to speed on that because it, I thought it was going to come up sooner than it, whenever it may and it may not. So when it was zoned for the residential, it was pretty much in, in the industrial corridor at that time, up and down 220, right?
It was already in the same 220 corridor.
It was, but, but you-
It was called something different. It, it was the economic development growth corridor then. The land use plan was different when it was rezoned to residential. It was our older land use plan. And then that, and with the ordinances at the time, it was RA that went to RP because all subdivisions had to be RP and become, and be special use or conditional use. Our rules changed and the corridor changed slightly. The intent behind the corridor is primarily the same. Now there's more industrial input on it than previously. Previously, it was more commercial and light industrial. Now it's all industrial and commercial. So just to clarify that for you, it, it, it's more intensive now with the thought process that all that is moving up out of Guilford County, where before the, the thought was to leech off on what's in Guilford County and develop that corridor. Now it's actually happening here as well. So to prepare for it, it became a little bit more intensified, but more defined.
Right. Of that is that all, all county leadership wanted to do whatever could be done in the land use plan to avoid simply becoming a bedroom community, to, to also have locally centered commercial and industrial activities going on that benefit the county as a whole. So that sort of shifted as this newest land use plan was adopted. And y'all have heard me say it, the one thing to always keep in mind about the land use plan, it's a guide, it's a guide. Ordnance is the ordinance, right? Those are the rules. This, this is black and white. It's what you can do, this is what you can't do. You can do this if you do this, you can do that if you don't do that. The land use plan, that's why we do consistency and reasonableness, you know. Is it consistent with the land use plan and is it reasonable in the context of these other four or five factors? And often it's, you know, it's a slam dunk, it's consistent and reasonable down the list. Just as often as y'all have heard, it might not be really consistent, but it's pretty reasonable, given the history of zoning in the area. Or it's consistent with the land use plan, like in the Auger Mill case, but it's not really reasonable, given the area. You know, they're surrounded by two major subdivisions. There's no water sewer, there's no direct access to a highway. So the land use plan is always a guide and some members of the public like to get hold of the land use plan and say, this is the land use plan? This is what you're supposed to do right here. And they do. And that's a natural sort of thing for a layperson to do, but it's just important to remember that the land use plan is exactly what Marcy said, it lays out the next two decades. But it's also just, it's, it's a set of guiding principles, it's not like the ordinance. And I have, I mean, I have to remind myself of that, because I'll be telling people on the phone, if they're saying, well, what are the chances if I rezonate this property over here? Could we maybe do neighborhood commercial? And I'll tell them what the land use plan says and this, that and the other. And then I always try to be careful to make sure they understand that the land use plan is, is a guide. So I just wanted to toss that in there.
It's a good point to bring up though, Quinn, you know, when I, I served on a committee with Kevin Berger, Charlie Hall, Charlie Rakestraw and Gene Robertson, when we did all the revisions to the UDO and the land use plan. And we were very careful to remove a lot of words like shall and will. Because then they became mandates as opposed to being a suggesting guide. The original draft of the land use plan had a lot of shals and wills in it. Out they went.
Earlier on, we, we talked about standing. Does this board ever have, and I'm changing the subject here and I, I'm trying to get this in my mind. Does this board ever determine standing for somebody?
Yes.
Then is there a definition of standing? I'm trying to understand what standing means.
Do you have, do you have enough interest in the property to suffer damages? Do you have enough interested in the property to recommend change so you can use it? You've got such a narrow lot, you need, you need some help, you need some moving of setbacks so you can put your home on. The property owner in that case has standing.
Okay, I get that, but my, but it's, it's done by a case by case basis then?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know, I'm, I'm good.
To use your example, Bert.
The best made plans and UDOs are completely muddled up by the federal government and the state government where they put things in like the Greensboro urban loop that went through my family's farm.
Oh, yeah.
And boy, I'm telling you, I heard about it and that was, that had been discussed for 50 years about how the loop was going to be coming. And people knew about it and talked about it, but they built their subdivisions anyway.
And it-
And 30, 40 years later, the state comes in and buys their property, but it changes. It changes from residential to a eight lane highway. Reedy Fork Ranch is another good example. They put that enormous development out there and it's huge. Now they're putting a bridge in to provide access to it, because the bridge that we're using is falling apart. But all of that farmland, it was, and it was beautiful farmland, it's door to door, concrete pad, vinyl clad houses.
Which we're going to be seeing right here.
And who knows what's going to happen 25, 30 years from now? Maybe they'll expand Highway 29, make it an eight lane highway. If they do, they're going to displace a lot of people.
I could see that happening with the casino in Danville.
Yeah. And when a, when a mill shuts down like Dan, Dan River, land, and land use plan goes out the window. But that's why it's planned. And that's why the planning board can make recommendations to the commissioners on how to change that plan. You can see things coming.
Well, and you see what's happened with Reedy Fork too. On the other side, you've got Procter and Gamble that, that built out and all the ancillary businesses that are, that are moving right up that highway and, you know, when, when somebody, when-
We've got an enormous children's clothing business that was once a Red Poll cattle farm.
Yeah.
Ever since I was a kid. And now it's a giant 2 million square foot facility. I don't know if they're cutting and sewing or if they're just distributing from that place. But that's where big, big warehouses ought to go on a highway.
Bernie, I think just to summarize, and you, you tell me if you don't agree with how I say this. For a legislative hearing, a rezoning, either a zoning map amendment or a zoning text amendment, that standing doesn't really factor into that. No one has to have standing. It's a general legislative process, pretty much anybody can come and say whatever they want to say, both that planning board and the board of commissioners. But if it's a special use permit, if it's an appeal, if it's a variance, you can individually, on a case by case basis, listen to testimony and determine whether or not a person has standing. And after you determine they have standing, do they have substantial material incompetent interest in what's happening? Do you live right next door to this thing that this person's asking for? Yeah, you probably have all those things. But if you're in the thousand foot notice area and you're right on the outer edge or you're half a mile away and you just don't like the idea of X thing happening, standing and potential for damage is questionable, so. And it's not necessarily something you have to call out every single time, I don't think. It just means that in legal terms, if they don't have this factual evidence to present, it becomes hearsay. And hearsay is inadmissible in a legal quasi judicial proceeding or a judicial proceeding, right? So, does that help any?
Part of the reason I asked the question is about 10, 12 years ago, I was on the other end of standing. I was on the, not this end, but the other end of it. And it never made sense to me why I didn't have standing at the time. And I won't go into all that because it's irrelevant, but I, I, I want to, I want to come to grips with understanding what standing means. That's what I'm trying to get at.
You think you have a better idea of it now?
Well, to me, standing means you either have a familial, a financial or some other type of direct interest in the property. If you do, in, in a zoning situation, we as a board can consider opinion testimony, uncorroborated. Opinion testimony, not requiring you to bring in a traffic consultant or a real estate appraiser, for example. But anything that's quasi judicial, then the rules change. And opinion testimony is only as good as the weight we give it. Or it's no good at all, because the, it's not competent, material or relevant.
It's just opinion.
It's just opinion.
Okay, I, I'm getting a clearer picture. I'm not perfect, but I'll get there.
It takes practice. It's like studying the catechism, you have to go back and read it again.
Right. And again, I'm new and I'm trying to understand this, that's, so I can make decent decisions.
Well, Julie brought up earlier a gentleman that indicated or suggested that we could be bought. So the difference between the two would be, you're telling me you got the money to do that? The other one is show me you got the money to do that.
Okay, I'm good.
What's next? What time is it?
It's 3 o'clock.
It's 3:10. You want to take about a five minute break?
Yes.
Works for me.
It sounds like you have a little bit of an accent. It's like a single word.
It's a part-time teaching.
Really?
Yeah.
Where?
I'm having a meeting Wednesday with...
County was attracting Sanderson Farms in, and this is 2010, maybe 2011. Big poultry outfit.
Yep.
And the economic development folks in the county wanted it there. And it was zoned for that property. Everything zoning-wise was great. But the city of Wilson didn't want it because they're going to bring in hundreds of folks from Mexico, I guess. That was the reason. That was the perceived reason. So, they fought it. And there's a great court of appeals case on, it's Morgan versus Nash County. It talks about all the reasons why you have standing and why you don't have standing. The folks, the Wilson, city of Wilson folks were even pressed the court on the fact that they were going to have to take the waste from the chicken processing plant and spray it. They had spray fields six miles away. The property was zoned for a spray field. They were going to have to put a six-mile pipeline in. And all of it was permitted. All of it was zoned properly. North Carolina dean was going to give them the permits to spray the waste product from the plant onto these spray fields. And they fought it for years. And they ran up a million dollars' worth of legal fees. And at the end of the day, Bob Hunter, who wrote the opinion, he said, "No, sorry. Neighbors, you may not like it, but you don't have standing to fight it. You can't show any special damages. The property's too far away. It's too remote."
What was that? Morgan v. Nash?
Morgan versus Nash County.
Is that COA?
Court of Appeals, 2012. I can get you a copy of the case.
No, I've got FastCase. I can look it up.
Okay. Real good case study on what is standing, what's not standing, and what the court looks Sanderson Farms found another piece of property in Texas, and they said, "So long." And they went to Texas. But they're an enormous poultry processing company. And all of that was done because the city didn't want it. The county did want it. And the zoning, land was zoned properly, and the land use plan, everything fit. It actually fit. But they just...
Look at the economic impact that cost Nash County. And you certainly don't want to have that, you know, corporations like that to say, "That county don't, you know, you don't want to do business in that county. They don't want to..." You know what I'm saying there against everything or against...
Well, with every big business comes some type of drawback. A six-mile pipeline to spray chicken guts and processing water, I'm not sure what the spray field was for. I guess it's just the processing water. Because I know the chicken plants, they use everything. Anything that humans can't consume, the dog food and cat food factories use. But it was an interesting study in standing and zoning because all of the property was zoned appropriately. The court found it was zoned appropriately for a spray field, and the processing line, wastewater line was all permitted. Everything was regulated by the federal and state government. So, what's the problem? And it went through the trial court, and it went through the court of appeals. And just think of it, a million dollars in legal fees later, the company went away.
Adios.
So, but there are a lot of tough decisions that had to be made in that case by the planning boards of Nash County and the citizens. And that's what you're faced with. And there's no easy way out. Only thing I can say is when you're hearing these cases, just be nice.
You mentioned something about not going out to, you know, don't go look at the property, stay out of it and all that because...
When you're sitting in the capacity of a quasi judicial board, you really can't have any influences on you. You've got to rely on what the applicant says.
And even ourselves out in the field, we need to really watch our...
Right. Should try to avoid that. Now, there may be cases where it's right next door to you. And if that's the case, and you're hearing it, you need to say, "Before we start, this property is right next door to me. I know all about it, and I'm not going to vote on it." And that way, I think you're good when you do that.
So, to piggyback on that a little bit, but almost a separate issue. So, we have a case where, it's been a couple of months ago, the parcel of land is right beside of my husband's family, my husband's family's family farm. So, I know that piece of property well. I've been on that property for, you know, a very, very long time. I have no financial interest in that piece of property whatsoever. Doesn't, I don't own it. My husband and my mother-in-law own a piece of property that's across the, down a hill and up a hill kind of thing. But, and the property that we were making the decision on, it wasn't even part of that farm. I just happen to know where it is, happen to know the area around it. So, we're going to come up on those things every once in a while. And I understand that there could possibly be in the future another one where we're making a decision with an adjacent piece of property that used to be part of that farm. How do we decide where we should recuse ourselves?
Now, those were legislative discussions, but you still have to have a direct financial interest, not even like a secondary financial. You have to directly benefit or not benefit from whatever happens to recuse yourself from voting in legislative matters. Now, with quasi judicial, this is, does it still follow the same...
Living test?
Judicial, the test is, have you already made up your mind?
And in cases, so, because we live in a small community, and this is a unique case, and it hasn't even happened yet, but I'm already figuring, trying to figure out in my mind if this happens because I hear it's coming, that the, one of the people has made accusations against me personally and has sent it out everywhere. So, at that point, does that compromise my ability to be fair and impartial? I mean, and those are kinds of things that we may come up upon all the time. Like, we may be like familial with a lot of the people that come before us.
This is not a very big county. I mean, everybody's either married to somebody or is related to them in some way. And that's true. The test is, do you think you can be fair and impartial? That's the test. So, it's when you're sitting in the jury box, and the attorney says, "Can you be fair and impartial? My client's accused of murdering 10 people with a hatchet." And you heard about it. Question is, have you made up your mind? I was on a jury one time. Put me in the box.
Good point that I hadn't thought of.
It just so happened that one of the women that worked for Cone Mills down in the cotton records department, her 17-year-old son was stabbed to death for his radio and $5 at a car wash. And they finally caught the person that did it, and here I am in the box in the criminal trial. Peter McHugh was the judge, and this was in Guilford County. And the defense attorney said, "Do you know anything about this case?" I said, "Yes. I've heard a lot about it. The talk around the office." Yeah. It's tragic. I've seen the effect on the victim's mother. It changed her. "Yeah, I know something about it." He said, "Can you be fair and impartial?" I said, "I sure can. Absolutely." And then he asked me, "Would you believe the police officer over my client?" I said, "Probably." Because I'm being honest. And I got kicked off the jury. But that's the type of analysis you have to make. Can you be fair and impartial?
And that is interesting because I, even if this person, you know, has pretty much attacked me personally out in the public, whatever has come, I, no, I haven't, just because it's him, I haven't made up my mind about what, you know, if he's asking for whatever. Rezoning, no, I haven't made up my mind because we haven't...
It'd still be a legislative decision. So, you still have to show a direct financial interest to recuse yourself. I've worked in a town one time where the mayor, the clerk, the tax collector, the HR person, and two Polite Works personnel were all in the same family. So, the whole town, everybody's related to each other. They still had to hear their cases. Because they were obligated to feel their position that they'd been appointed to as long as they weren't benefiting from the choices they were making. Now, when it came to quasi judicial...
Yeah, that's...
They had to be able to sit there and say, like Clyde pointed out, had they already made their decision? If their mind is fixed at this point, but with legislative decisions, if your mind's fixed, should you bother showing up? Probably not. But you're still obligated to sit there and at least hear it out and make your vote because it's legislative.
And remember, the goal is to be fair to the property owner and be fair to the neighbors and balance all of that with your land use plan and your unified development orders. The community as a whole, what benefits the community as a whole? Does it benefit the community as a whole to have this Amazon warehouse in the highway corridor? It's going to displace a lot of farmhouses that are along there because it's 1,000 acres of land, but it's going to provide 2,000 jobs. And sure, there's going to be more traffic, there's going to be more noise, there's going to be more crime because people are going to be late for work, and they're going to be speeding, and they're going to get tickets. All of those things are what you have to balance. And unless you're getting a check, and if you're in a really, really small town where there's only one bank, and that banker finances everything...
Yeah.
...that the government does, then that's when it becomes a question. If that banker is also the mayor of the town, does he get to vote on the bond issue that's going to go through his bank and make him 2% on a $14 million deal? In that case, probably does, and he shouldn't vote on it.
Well, that was quite helpful because I had not thought of it like that.
They're not easy questions to wrestle with.
I wanted to piggyback something off of that really quick, a couple of things, actually. We were talking about Clyde, when it's appropriate to say, "Visit a site before a hearing." For a legislative process, a rezoning, it's wide open. I mean, you can go see it, you can discuss it amongst yourselves, you can do all those things. It's discouraged that you go visit a site for a quasi judicial proceeding, but if you do, simply disclose it at the hearing, right? It's the best way to sum it up?
Yes.
And on that, we're talking, we're talking about ethics, right? That's what we're talking about. And I know Quint had voiced, he wanted to talk some about ethics too, so I just wanted to point that out to you, how you might want to bring that up.
Well, if the property owner comes to you and says, "I want you to vote this way," or "I'm not going to vote for you next time." If there's a real ethical question that you're aware of, then you come see me, and we'll work it out. You don't have to do that in a vacuum. You're not out there alone. We'll help you if we can.
Right.
It's important to remember that what people are looking for when they come before these boards and that we have here represented today, if they're denied the opportunity to use their land, and this is in particular as opposed to getting a favorable ruling, because one's going to get favorable and one's going to get unfavorable just by the process. But the important thing is, is that the person that's denied the use of the land in the way that he would wish is owed an explanation. And that's the important thing. Let them know why they're being turned down. We can't just say, "No, you can't do that. See you later." We have to be, I don't know, polite's the right word, but accommodating may be a better word to let them know why we made our decision.
Well, I guess too, and out on the street, you don't want somebody to be able to come in here and say, "That's not what you said out there."
Oh, I've already been through that with the casino rezoning that was done.
That's not the way you feel out on the streets.
I had a WRAL call in my house 10 times a day.
Oh, yeah, you did. I forgot about that.
Well, so, let's go, we keep talking about this 2:20 thing, but let's go back to that. One of the things that I want us to discuss is how that thing went down and that it shouldn't have happened that way. So, there's enough new board members here not to know if you didn't watch it. I made a motion to change the zoning. And then there was crickets. So, you know, I guess the other board members had the right not to second it, but then for Paul to have to, as the chair, to have to second, guys, we got, I mean, even if it goes down in defeat, if somebody makes a motion, I mean, we should, we should, there should have been a second from someone other than Paul. And I'd like to hear y'all's thoughts on that because I felt, I was hanging. I mean, I kept going, "All right, can we, you know, even if, there needs to be a second, and it does, instead of dying for a lack of a second, we should go on the record." And that's just, and that sort of goes back to almost internal ethics to my mind.
Well, to me, that goes a little bit of what, it's almost like, so, we can't even make that, you know, there was no, you've got to be able to stand for something, you know? You've got to make a decision. And we're not doing our job if we don't.
What Julie's suggesting here that also happened, after I seconded it, I asked for discussion, and not one person on the board would say anything, which is why I just made the comment that you can't do that. We owe the people an explanation for why we're going to vote the way we vote.
Right.
And to just have left Julie and myself up...
Hanging. We were hanging. We were hanging.
It was very, very unfortunate that it happened that way.
I would think that you would always get a second on virtually anything.
We didn't.
Because the next step is discussion, and you get to say what you think at that point, right?
That didn't happen.
Yeah. For the chair to have to, yeah, for the chair to have to make the second and then to have no discussion, I mean, I felt like I was the only one that talked, and y'all kind of knew where I stood from the beginning. But I was, and I didn't say anymore because I was stunned that, and I understand that was an incredibly important thing, but for, to have us look, just, I don't know, we looked like we didn't know what we were doing. And we just didn't, I mean, it just didn't, we should have done a better job.
What that really comes down to, and I'm just going to make my comment, and I want Clyde to it, is... is proper parliamentary procedure, right? The same goes for the Board of Commissioners. Let's say you motioned that evening to approve. You didn't get a second from anyone else, but Paul seconded. Then we take a vote on that. There should have been a vote taken on that. If the majority of the board didn't want to approve it, someone should have counter motioned. I counter motioned to recommend denial of this request. Get a second on that and vote on that, because really what you had was just a failed motion.
You just said "linga," and either way.
As opposed to, as opposed to a vote that gives a recommendation. And the state statutes say the planning board should be giving a recommendation. So, the better way to have handled that that night would have been someone, or if that happens in the future. If it's a motion that someone makes and the majority doesn't agree with, then vote on that motion, and then someone can counter motion and vote on that motion. Does that make, would you agree, Clyde?
Yeah, well, the point is, I'm the property owner, I want my property rezoned, and I want to know why.
Right.
You're not rezoning it. So if I've got a motion and a second, and nobody else says anything, I'm entitled to know why you think it's unreasonable, or it's inconsistent, or for whatever reason you think.
We owe them that.
I want it on the record.
Yeah.
As the property owner, please tell me, because then I can go back and figure out another way, maybe we can make this work. But if you sit there and you don't tell them why, you're denying them their due process rights to hear from the opposition. And that, I mean, that is very important. That's why, even if you're against it, I mean, I encourage you for it or against it, whatever you decide, state your reasons why on the record.
And the fact that I, you know, we, from time to time, we should probably discuss these things on the backside, almost debrief, because I felt like the amount of people that were here that night had an impact on that vote, because the month before, we breathed through a text amendment knowing what was coming, and we voted to approve it. Now, people can change their mind, things can change, that, you know, that's certainly reasonable, but to not have, but to not just have any discussion whatsoever. As Clyde said, we owe the citizens of this county at least some explanation when something like that happens. And we typically, that was the only one, I mean, I've been on this board how long now? Three years? That's the only time I've seen that happen. And it was so important for that particular one, because we gave up everything. We just, here, we're going to pass this buck, and that's not why we're here. So, you know, that's why I like this opportunity here for us to sort of hear how that happened and, you know, get in our heads, so how am I going to deal with that? And am I willing to put myself out there? And we've got to, because as Clyde said, this is not easy work, this is tough work. But it's rewarding work, because this is the people's work. And when we don't give the people something, then I think we let them down.
See, the, a little more background is important at this point, especially the chronology. Prior to the rezoning request for the 192 acres on 2/20 in June of last year, the planning board made a text amendment to the U D O providing, or making possible, or enabling electronic gambling as a matter of right in, what is it, highway commercial, Marcy? Highway commercial.
Electronic gaming is what it's technically called, not gambling.
Electronic gaming, but the word "state license" is in that text amendment as well. That text amendment was passed within a matter of days of the governor having signed House Bill 347, which legalized sports betting. And the idea was that there's going to be remote locations to conduct this sports betting, that if a property can be rezoned to highway commercial as a matter of right, that type of business could exist, and it would be state licensed and legal. There is no other form of electronic gaming, to my knowledge, in this state that's legal. There's all kinds of sweepstakes places and all of that, and there's court case after court case that the Carolina Court of Appeals or North Carolina Supreme Court has heard, where they ruled that those games amount to chance and not skill, therefore are legal, nor do they have a state license to operate them. So they can't conform to the U D O as it's written with the requirement for a state license. So, on the basis of that, and without the general public knowing that that was the intent of the text amendment to the U D O, we were accused of having prior knowledge that the rezoning of the 192 acres was specifically for a non-tribal land casino. And all that was, was speculation. We did not know, we were not told, and, well, you saw what happened. If, the video is still up on the Rocky Hamnow website or the planning board website, you can see for yourself what happened.
So, I have a question, and we've got all these places popping up all over the county. Are they legal or illegal at this point?
I doubt they're legal.
Most of those are in the municipalities as well, not just in the county. If they're in the county, they haven't gone through us. One did.
Okay.
But they came in claiming they had everything legal at the state level, because there is still a provision under one of the general statutes that says all this is prohibited. So that's what's prohibited, if they can comply with what's not prohibited, and that's what they're claiming for those kind of instances in all these towns, because there's one outside of Stoneville, we don't do Stoneville zonings, so we had to send them to Stoneville, but that's what they were claiming in the office. One's in Reedsville, they came into our office claiming this, they're all saying the same things. So what they're all hiding behind is that, because what they're doing, quote unquote, they think is not prohibited, that they should be allowed. So, but we should probably diverge from that conversation, so there's no kind of like chance of ex parte communication?
Since we have a case coming up.
Since you have an appeal coming up next month regarding a similar situation.
Yeah.
So let's probably move on from that conversation.
Well, Julie, so let me, and if we could have a situation where we have a disagreement about something, okay? So the way that that should have played out is, is somebody should have seconded besides Paul, and that opened the conversation, and if, and I think the biggest concern, me particularly, was, I have no idea what they're doing. I mean, what, it didn't make any sense to me. And what we should have done is open up that conversation, and then, and then we could get some guidance from staff that says, "Well, you know, that's not exactly what you're supposed to be deciding here," and that kind of thing, you know, which is what we get, and then have, and then have another motion to do something.
And it turns out the casino was irrelevant, because we, that was not, the, what was going to be on that property was irrelevant.
Irrelevant. And I think that's where staff does a good job of telling us to don't do that.
Once according to parliamentary procedure, once a motion is made, it has to be disposed of before you can have another motion. According to parliamentary procedure, you can only deal with one motion at a time.
That's true.
So, the proper procedure at that point, since a motion was made and seconded, and it was not being withdrawn, then the proper thing to have done would have been to vote on that motion, and then an additional motion could have been made if so desired.
Or ask for that motion to be withdrawn, correct?
Yeah.
That's true.
You can ask that the motion be modified, amended, you can ask that.
But the discussion was the important part, right? Because that's where, that's where we as a body can negotiate these things. So if, if I make a motion, and we start, and it's seconded, and we start discussing it, and we realize that that motion is not serving what we need, then somebody can say, "Will you withdraw your motion, or will you change your motion?" I've seen that happen before, and it, you know, it will work okay.
And we've done that before, where we've withdrawn.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Paul, can I make a, can I ask a point of order?
Sure.
Parliamentary question. Once a, once a motion is made, if it's made in proper format, is all discussion on that, should all discussion on that cease? Otherwise, you're debating, you end up debating a motion. I don't think a motion is a debatable issue.
Well, there's, there's two ways the discussion answers can be handled, one of which is strictly required by the rule, but small local government rules provide for the opposite. We usually hold discussion before voting. Parliamentary procedure says the motion is made, and then the discussion is held. That's where the discussion primarily is held at.
After a motion is seconded, the next step.
Yeah, once a motion is made and seconded, according to parliamentary procedure, that's when the discussion takes place.
Instead of discussing it before a motion is made.
The UNC School of Government, in a publication called "Procedure Rules for Small Businesses," or "Small Boards," provides that a discussion can be held before the vote.
Okay, well, I'll have to reread all that. I, if someone, if someone, for example, and I heard this word mentioned one time several meetings ago, should we table this issue? Should we table this discussion pending further input from the staff, or something of that nature? But a motion to table is not debatable.
Well, you typically ask for discussion before a motion is generally made. But in the instance you're referring to, Julie, there was no discussion, either before or after.
Either before or after, yep.
A word like this, correct me if I'm wrong, Clyde. Discussion before motion is fine, motion then discussion is fine, as long as there's some discussion. And then proper motion is made. In response to your question, John, about non-debatable, if you made a motion to table something.
You have to give a reason.
For whatever reason, right? Because we need more information from so-and-so, DOT, whatever. Then someone else can second and agree, and then you can vote. If no one else seconds, someone else should counter motion, introduce a new motion, or ask you to withdraw yours. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to add something to that. Being that I was on the board at that point, I'd spoken with some of the people on the board, and they felt that more information was coming from the public than was coming from the board of the county to help them understand what was coming. And I guess between the pressure, and I believe we had an email that was talked about not asking the public any questions, I think when that happened, it kind of may have limited them to where the board sit there and goes, you know, "What are we doing? And why are we here with the county?" Nobody had really said, you know, "This is what could happen."
Did it sway the way you felt?
Well, I voted no on the first special use, because I didn't think there was no information enough there. You know, we sit here and we listened and talked about a rezoning for campers on Ellisboro. I even heard a question asked, "What is the camper's going to be parked on?", which was gravel. Okay, I mean, we went that deep into campers, but when this special use permit popped up, there was nothing discussed. We discussed 30 minutes of why, 20 minutes from the county, and a 20-minute discussion from Clayton Homes of why, double why it should be put in a residential protected area that we knows a no.
I think earlier, didn't somebody say, "That's, it's a yes or no on the special use." It's not, they don't have to present us any evidence of anything.
The text, the text.
For the electronic gaming.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the text, he's talking about the text.
Getting rid of the special use.
He's talking about a text amendment, not a special use permit. I think he's just.
That night for that special use permit, wasn't there a special use permit for electronic gaming?
No.
Or is that a text amendment?
The text amendment, there were a special use permit, it removed them from being a special use permit to being permitted by right in highway commercial.
I don't think, I thought there would have been some more discussion on that personally. Maybe there's not. But when we sit there, and that was like an eight or nine-minute meeting, and we were done, I felt I didn't have enough information to make an adequate decision.
At which point, and I'm going to interrupt here, sorry.
Yes.
I think that's kind of, I agree with you, but you should have also, at that point, if y'all had questions, that was the time to ask them as well.
Right.
So to both y'all's points, I think both of those situations probably could have been handled better.
Yeah.
By not just y'all, staff too. We could have prompted some questions from you as well.
Well, you know, and there's maybe where the training comes from as well, that, you know, when that happens and we see that, or there's new people here.
That's part of the reason why we're here today.
Right, right.
So.
That that brings to the point of order of why we should stop and ask questions, instead of just, seemed like it just got pushed through, here we go, we're done.
And let me explain, when it comes to the, let's take the rezoning from July last year. It's a legislative procedure, because it was a straight rezoning. Even if it had been conditional, it's still legislative, but you condition, you add a little bit more to it. But with a straight rezoning, even, and I'm no knowledge of what they want to use the property for, but we don't ask either. If someone calls and says a straight rezoning, we ask them, the current use table, are you going to be able to make use of this property with the way you're requesting it? If they say yes, we move forward with it. Because I can't let what they might use it for taint how we review what it's going to be when we present y'all information, because our information is supposed to be just factual, and the only opinion we add is reasonableness, but those reasons need to be based on facts and other things as well. So, we can't talk about, and I had the public calling me every day, "It's going to be this, it's going to be this." It's like, "I can't say it is, I can't say it isn't, I don't know." So even if y'all had started discussing that and you had asked us, we still would have been said, "No, the applicant has not given us a definitive use. They claim that the use table does supply what they need to have." And that is the truth.
Right, right.
But that's all we can still supply. But it's still up to y'all to make those discussion points and draw it out. And if you need more information, then say it. Ask the applicant. That's why you have that time period with the applicant as well directly, is get it out of them. And if you further need more information, and it's within our legal grounds to ask for it, you can then table and request it.
Yep.
But that's what y'all need to do. We present to y'all what we've got in hand that meets, if it meets this, it checks that box, and this is what it is, this is the case. The time to gather information is when y'all are together here to gather that information. So, to Julie's point, yes, there should have been discussion. At the same time, when no one seconded your motion, it should have been, in my personal and professional opinion, Paul should have, you know, said, "No, second, do I have another motion?" And I don't know if he would have had one, because nobody seemed to want to speak up that night, regardless on anything. And.
The reason I seconded the motion.
I understand that, but the public doesn't understand that. And we fielded questions for two months, almost solid, about that night.
Lord.
It was embarrassing to us.
It casted such a, you know, the public left with a, "Oh, man, it's all, you know, it's."
Yeah.
They already formed their opinion when they walked out of here.
Right, and that's true, but they had nothing to form it on.
Exactly.
And so, our damage control for two months, it's not, I say two months, it's still going on.
Sure.
From that night, that's half the reason we're here, is to make sure that y'all understand that it doesn't matter what you vote, I mean, it matters, but don't get me wrong. We're not looking for specific votes from you guys. What we're looking for is informed votes, that you feel comfortable making your votes, and you've done something that the public understands, and it's built upon a foundation that we have legally that we can do. You know, if we're in a quasi judicial on an appeal of something I've said, and the person just says, "No, he says, 'I just can't do it, he ain't working with me.'" Well, it's up to you to figure out if that's true, and only if that's true, not if their septic system's on the property is possible. Do they have buildings without permits, yes or no? Is it because I won't work with him, yes or no? Is it because I tried working with them, and they just cannot legally meet the provisions of our ordinance? Then you make your decision. That's the way that we need to start approaching these things.
The thing is, on a straight rezoning, you know, that, I'm not even sure, I'm not even sure we're permitted to ask what they want to use the landfill, as long as it falls in that table, and they reassure us that it will.
Well, to be fair, you can ask.
And Jeff, they're not obligated to tell us.
Right, right, I know that, but this is what I was. But this is what I was, like, what if something else comes up like this again? And I'm not saying like it's the casino. I'm saying something else that draws a lot of public attention is coming here. Do we have the opportunity to go back or before and sit down and discuss something before the meeting starts? To where the people don't feel, or some of them over here may feel, well, you threw me out here, I'm trying to figure it out. Now it's time to make a decision. I'm not saying they were well informed or not.
If it's legislative...
Leg, yeah.
And if it's not quasi judicial, if it's legislative, y'all can come talk to us anytime before that meeting on anything you want to.
Can the whole group have a, say, a meeting?
Because it has to be an open meeting.
Falls under the public meeting law then.
Okay.
Then we have to discuss it here.
That's what this meeting is for. Nothing says you have to make a decision the same night you hear public comment.
I recall sending out a cautionary email about not giving into speculation when these things come up. If you do, you're just going to torment the hell out of yourself trying to figure out what they're going to use this land for. You've got a table of accepted uses. They are entitled to get a rezoning based on utilizing one of those uses in the table. And it's not up to us to speculate on which one it may or may not be.
Right, right. And I get that on, you know, not speculating, and he has his rights. But I just think that, you know, if, like, you know, that's not the only ones going to pop up. There's going to be other issues that may pop up one day that where somebody may feel, I just don't know what we are into right here. And that is swaying their opinion to where if we could sit back and we discussed, we talked, or there's a couple of them are emailing out, or we all was in on this together, back and forth.
Well, then we run into, then we run into a problem with ex parte communications. The whole idea is we air it in public. And that's why we're not going to be given the details about some things as opposed to other cases. The duty is to air it in public so that they get to know what we're doing.
And the text amendment, this may be a little unique in that the text amendment came before the rezoning request. And we did that so that we could follow, or anticipating following what the state of North Carolina was getting ready to do. So we were...
Proposed bill, it was going to license, because we've been plagued with all these video gaming places popping up in mom and pop stores all over the state. And it's gone to the Supreme Court twice. And they have said they're illegal. The video game software is illegal. So they're not allowed. So the legislature says, you know what? We believe we can license these through the lottery commission. And we will give that money to the historically black universities. That's what the bill said. So I'm sitting there reading the proposed bills, and I thought, holy cow. If they're going to put these things and license them, what will the license fee be? Where will they go?
It's in the bill.
Will we have the same problem again? Where would be the best place to put these? In the basement of the Baptist church or in the highway commercial? So that's how that, that's how that came up.
No bingo for you.
The fees are in the bill the governor signed. The master license is a million dollars.
Right. Now, make them up again. And if they get a license for these video gaming things, and it's a $5,000 per machine license, and the state's getting 20% of everything, and it's all going to be reported to the state, just like the bookmaking is going to be reported to the state.
That last week, something was signed, is that, and I know Satchfield Country Club is one of them.
The lottery commission is already looking at 12, I think, 12 companies that are putting down millions of dollars each to get their license to do sports betting.
Right. And I think March 11 is, must be kickoff day on it.
That's right.
In other words, that could be something we, maybe coming down the pipe and here from now, who knows?
Yes.
How are you going to control it if somebody can play it on their phone?
Right.
Or on their laptop.
Well, and I think the other thing that we, when they were...
They're probably doing it.
When all the people that were giving testimony, or the public, people that were doing the public speaking part, if they, you know, we just need to go back to, so here are the uses in whatever zone that they're asking to be rezoned. Because, yes, according to the, if whatever law is passed, according to highway commercial, you can have anything from a, you know, a whatever to a whatever. And I think people don't understand, and they're never going to understand, that even if it's, they think if it's RA, if it's residential agricultural, that it's going to be protected, and there's always going to be five cows out there. No, you can put a pig farm or a chicken house on that. And that's, you know, they didn't understand, you know, it didn't matter. And it, the use really didn't matter. What we were doing was changing the use of the land from this chicken farm to this possible...
Whatever.
Gas station.
Well, you've got another issue too. You've got all these dazzling urbanites that are moving down here from Virginia and Maryland. And they don't know where bacon comes from or where eggs come from. And they move into a development, and they say, what is that smell? And it's the farmer spreading fertilizer on his field.
At your breakfast, pal.
So, you know, that's what happens when you're in transition. And this county's in transition, from farm to urban, very quickly.
Or ex-urban, or sub-urban, or, yeah, more ex-urban, but...
Look at Summerfield, I mean, how many apartments are going up in Summerfield now?
Oh, my gosh.
Couch agreement.
And this is the other issue that we have with our population in general in Rockingham County. We're older, we don't like things to change, and people get real bit out of shape about it.
That's half of North Carolina.
Well, through that, through that, but...
Lady and gentlemen, it's four o'clock. Clyde, you had a four o'clock ending on your...
You want to do this again? You want to talk about a specific problem or subject? Just let us know.
Okay.
We can analyze that Morgan versus Nash County case. That would be an interesting dissection. It's about 25 page opinion, but it's pretty well written.
I really think you ought to go with Remarberry versus Madison.
Can I suggest, can I suggest that if you see things...
Being facetious.
If you see things that we need to do better at, you know, you pretty good, at the beginning targeted, okay, this didn't go well. And I think that that's really helpful for us to learn how to be more...
You know, to do a better job of our responsibility.
Practice is the key to anything. And a deliberate, you have to be deliberate in following the rules.
Yeah.
And be, and like I say, just be nice to people. A lot of times, you can diffuse an upset person by just smiling and saying, all right, what else do you have to say?
That's what I put right here at the very front.
Ways he said in Roadhouse, be nice.
Smile and then remake him that.
Before we adjourn, I just want to make sure about this because you had some very good points. You had some very good points, very good points, right? When we're talking about a legislative decision, a zoning map, there's two types. A zoning map amendment, a zoning text amendment. We're changing the text or we're changing the map. Either way, it's a legislative decision. So if we're making a zoning map amendment, it's going to come at you essentially one of two ways. Conventional, straight, which means all uses over here are going to change to all uses over here, if that gets passed. Or you're going to get conditional, which is, okay, we've struck out 50% of these uses, which, so that's a limited use zoning. Or a conditional that shrinks it way down, like the light industrial one that we recently did on, you know.